Okay, Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we're here for Fire Department and Office of Emergency Management. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my left by Council President Brandon Scott, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pigott from the 7th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, and Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, in the back. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, staff to the Committee. We're also joined by Kimberly Rubens and Rebecca Tab from the Office of Council President Brandon Scott. Before we begin, I know Mr. McMillan from Office of Emergency Management needs to leave. You have a backup here. Who's that person? Okay, can you come up and grab a seat, sir? OEM Edwin? Is that his name? Edmund? Where's Edmund? Edmund? Oh, you're Edmund. Excellent. Thank you, sir. Okay, Chief, we're gonna let David do his slide real quick, get him in and out of here. We're also joined by Councilman Cohen, Zeke Cohen, from the 1st District, and Jeff Amoros, representing Mayor Jack Young. Colleagues, for Mr. McMillan, any of the incident response stuff related to the cybersecurity incident, we're gonna handle all those questions tomorrow. So, Mr. McMillan, take it away and please be brief.
I'll be very brief. Council President Scott, Chairman Costello, other honorable members of the Council, just here to talk quickly about Service 608, Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. You can see the fiscal 2020 recommended level is 1.6 million roughly. 600,000 of that is actually grant funds from the Maryland Department of the Environment that have come in from the state to support projects, physical projects directly relating to the recurrent flooding on Frederick Avenue. Those funds can be used for a cost share match for any federal funds that we get, so we're really excited about that. But the rest of it's basically current level of service. Most of our funds go towards OEM salaries and contracts, with a little bit going to training exercises and conferences. Not listed on the slide is also approximately 1.4 million in federal grants that we receive through the State Homeland Security Grant Program and the Urban Area Security Initiative that also support our office in terms of salaries, training exercises, equipment, and other things that go to the city and the region. In terms of our two measures, we used to have five measures. Three of those were based on data that really is no longer regularly collected. One measure was from a citizen survey on emergency preparedness kits, but the survey is no longer done yearly, so we're looking to find a new measure. Another measure was the percentage of OEM employees ICS trained, which was previously reported out in a federal tool that no longer exists, but a lot of our employees are ICS trained, they have to be according to grant guidance. So we have a few other ideas. We've been working with audits, BBMR, and City Stat on those new measures, but on those current two that are on there, percentage of city agencies with the COOP plan, that's an effort we've been working on the last few years, and I'm sure we'll have more to say about that at tomorrow's budget hearing for BCIT. And then the percentage of volunteers trained in the SERP program serves the program that we continue to support citizen emergency response teams. But we're also looking at broadening it and generalizing it into perhaps a program of similar nature that Baltimore County and Anarundal run called Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which is basically the same thing, but with less of an operational approach to training citizens for emergency preparedness, one that's more, I think, open and broad-reaching. And the reality is, having professionalized fire and police services, the need for citizen volunteers during emergencies is just less, and it's something that you wouldn't use in a major disaster, but we just haven't had to yet. So with that, I'll just give it back to you all for any questions for me.
We're gonna... You're good, Mr. McMillan. We'll address any questions that we have with you tomorrow during BCIT.
Need Mr. Good to stay, or?
We're gonna ask him to stay for the first little bit, and if we're not getting any questions for OEM, we'll send him home too.
I appreciate it.
In fact, you can just go home. You're good. Yep.
All right, any questions?
Nope. We'll ask any questions that we have tomorrow.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. Okay, Chief Ford.
Yes, sir.
So we have... So on Tuesday, we talked about the facilities issue. The Council felt that the plan that you worked up with DGS was adequate. We appreciate that. We have a written response from you for the ideas that were generated by BBMR for cost savings, short-term, long-term, and contractual negotiations. Let's start with... Do you want to give a brief overview of this written response?
No, I think it'd be wiser just to go through them, if we're gonna go through them anyway. Are we going through each one of them anyway?
Okay. Double fill all terminal leave vacancies.
We already do that. We already do double filling in terminal leave vacancies, but we have to remember that even when we do that, there's a cost associated with it, meaning that there's someone... Let's say that the employee that's on terminal leave is sitting, has this seat. We're still paying that individual, and then we pay someone to backfill that individual, and then we're paying somebody to train. It's fine, but I want us to understand that that's what happens, and also that it is... We are absorbing it in our budget. It's not something that's additional funds. So it's part of us dealing with our budget.
Okay. Double fill paramedic positions that are on retirement leave.
Same thing. We're presently doing that, but again, I want to remind us that it's not a part... It's not a... It's not an additional amount that's been added to our budget. It's still coming out of the budget that we have. So, you know, my inquiry on the... I have a question on each one of those questioning whether or not this is gonna be considered to be added to the budget. That's all.
Okay. Continuous testing for hard-to-fill promotional opportunities such as emergency vehicle drivers and pump operators.
EDD and pump operators in particular is a little bit challenging because we do have... We do exhaust that list almost as soon as it comes out. It's been labor-intensive and very expensive to continuously put in on the way we're doing it. So one of the things we had discussed once before, and I think we're gonna go ahead and pull the trigger on it, is to do the testing process internally instead of hiring an outside consultant, which we do do, consistent with the other exams we do. And that way, that will give us the flexibility to offer it more often, and it would be more cost-effective.
Swap suppression units for EMS?
First of all, that... We generally do that on a day-to-day basis as needed, when we stand up to critical medic units. Critical medic units give us the flexibility to be able to move people from a suppression unit to an ambulance as needed. So this is something that we're already doing. So what I do want to say about that is, I think that we have to be very deliberate about looking at this, because ultimately, if we're talking about swapping the units forever, instead of doing it as a need basis, it's gonna involve... It's gonna involve looking at closing community fire stations or community apparatuses. That really needs to be a deliberate effort, and I think that if we're bringing outside agency, that should be part of what they look at.
Reducing the number of take-home vehicles or cap distances.
Okay. Currently, we don't have a policy for distances of vehicles. That's something we're gonna take care of pretty readily, because we don't have a policy, and the city doesn't have one. So we're gonna create our own. There are other agencies that do have some in the city, but we're gonna create our own. The other thing, I have reviewed twice our take-home vehicle list, and I've reduced it one time. I've been here about five and a half years, so it is reasonable to look at it again and evaluate what's out there, and that's what we're gonna do.
Excellent. Not backfill battalion chief position when acting for shift commander.
Yeah, that's a dangerous perspective. There needs to be oversight and management on the scene, and there needs to be accountability. Quite frankly, we had a line of duty, fire fatality, nine months after I arrived here, and one of the things that they were concerned about is accountability. In fact, they recommended us adding additional positions as battalion aides for the battalion's chiefs that we do have now. So doing that is not wise. I think that we always need to have that oversight and that, you know, management, that level of management.
Create paramedic position and UMS grant to add staffing level to day-to-day operations?
Yeah. First of all, the grant's already been established, the positions have been established. We can't reframe those positions. So that process is already in place. We can't hire anybody different, hire anybody new. I started a program up under that. But what I do want to say is this, I'm a huge fan, in fact, I'm a champion for the Mobile Integrated Health Community Paramedicine Program, but even that, we've got to be conscious of and be deliberate about. I met with several members of UMMC right after I got here, including recently, and what has been my stand on this is that it has to be a partnership. The hospital and the pre-hospital have to get together, because both of us gain from us diverting calls. Now, at the same time, I need to end by saying that when we do go into this more, as we should, it's gonna cause more FTEs, additional FTEs.
Okay. Reduce ALS EMS units to BLS?
That is a... I think that's not a wise perspective either, and the reason why is because we, even at the beginning of this process amongst us, we argued about whether or not we ought to go into a two-tiered system in the first place, because we felt it may compromise the safety of the people that we respond to. But we set a benchmark in the process of how... where it should be at, as far as the number of ALS in comparison to number of BLS units out there. We have reached that point. What I think would be the wise thing to do is evaluate the effectiveness of where we are and decide whether or not we ought to increase, whether we ought to stay where we are, or whether or not we ought to actually decrease and go to more ALS units, because the wisdom amongst our organization is, we don't feel comfortable with that right now. And the best way to do is to actually have information to work with, and we don't have that, because we just recently went to the last BLS conversion.
Okay, medium and long-term. Permanently consolidate firehouses?
The consolidation perspective only saves money on the buildings. You're literally just moving apparatus out of a community and moving them to another station, if I interpreted this correctly, if we interpret this correctly. The savings in that is reasonably minimal in comparison to the staffing, of course, but I think we need to be thoughtful about basically closing firehouses, where we do it and where we move. I think that should be part of the conversation with the outside agency that we bring in.
Bob Daniel, did he interpret what the suggestion was correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Convert sworn administrative functions to civilians and move positions into EMS?
Yes. We actually have been working on converting certain positions, civilian positions anyway. So that's something we're gonna continue doing. We're looking throughout the organization, and there's certain areas... In fact, this question, in a different way, is on the other questions that were sent to us. We're looking at doing that, but the challenge is, we have to maintain the staffing when we do that. In other words, if we replace these people with civilians and we pull them out and basically reduce staffing by the number of those positions, we just undermine the cause and the reason for doing it. We're only gonna save so much moving civilians in there, and we're gonna maintain the overtime that we're already doing. It's not gonna make a difference.
Okay. Return Safer 2 to increase future staffing flexibility.
Okay, this is another one I want to make sure I'm accurate about, what the perception was about that. What it reads to me is that we contact the federal grant organization, write them a letter, said, "We don't need this grant, we're gonna send you back your money." And are we gonna... So are we gonna stop and reduce the number of staffing based upon... I should say and/or. Stop and reduce the number of staffing that that grant carries, which is 40 positions, two units. First of all, I think that's unwise. We need the staffing. We will literally have to return a lot of money that we have to pay for positions. We would consequently reduce two units. We'd also put ourselves in a position that it would be unlikely for us to be looked on favorably for other grants in the future that come from this organization.
Transfer investigation of car fires to civilian staff?
Yeah. I can't see where... There's several ones, I'm trying to figure out how it would save money or if it affects overtime at all. This is certainly one of them. It would not affect overtime. What it would do, if we did that, it would reduce the stress on the fire investigators. They're there 24 hours a day, so you're not gonna save money, because they're gonna still be there, because they're still gonna be on... They're still gonna have to be called out. I only have one each shift. And so the savings... There's no savings there. I mean, they don't work overtime, there's no savings there, so I can't figure that
And there's other aspects of this that you can't discuss because of a possible contract negotiation, correct?
Possibly.
Yet...
But not this...
Chief, chief, chief.
Yeah.
Yes, is an adequate answer.
Not necessarily this one.
All you have to... Chief, all you have to say is yes.
I got you. Not necessarily this one. That's what I should say. Not necessarily this one. This one, it's just not gonna save money to... I'm still gonna have the investigators on staff to run on the house fires. What it would do, I would agree with this, it would reduce their workload, that they could just concentrate on structural fires, and there's a lot of car fires.
Expand community paramedicine program?
Yeah, that goes back to what I was saying earlier. I agree with it, I'm a fan of it, I think we should. I think we should do it throughout the city. I think we should include all the hospitals, but when we do that, it's gonna require them to come to the table in a mutual partnership, and all of us have skin in the game. It is going to increase our FTEs.
Okay. Place a nurse in the 911 call center to reduce low-activity calls for service.
Yeah, that perspective... The challenge with that perspective is ultimately what we'd end up developing as a screening process and establishing a criteria. In other words, if somebody calls 911, we assume that there are lower criteria, they would receive a lower... A slower response, for all practical purposes. Not only would they receive a slow response, what would happen, because they realize they received a slower response, they start calling back. So we'd end up increasing the number of 911 calls, and we'd have to add that staffing to the organization. There is a process of doing this, and we are reviewing it with other organizations that are doing it, to make sure, if we go that way, that we do it correctly.
And there are other aspects of that that you cannot discuss because of a possible contract negotiation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, so we have double fill all terminal leave vacancies, double fill paramedic positions that are on retirement leave, continuous testing for hard-to-fill promotional opportunities such as emergency vehicle drivers and pump operators, reduced number of take-home vehicles or cap distances.
I'm gonna assess, based on that, I'm gonna assess the take-home vehicles, the necessity of those, and come up with a policy.
Convert sworn administrative functions to civilian and move positions into EMS. So we have five of the suggestions from BBMR, which you either have underway and are going to enhance further, or that you're willing to explore.
Exactly.
Okay. And Bob/Daniel, the convert sworn administrative functions to civilians and move positions into EMS, that is something that can be included in the scope of the study?
So can I just comment on that one in particular, on this one? On the civilianization of both administrative functions and the investigations unit? The way we see that is kind of similar to police, that when you swap... You create a civilian position, and yes, the sworn position isn't needed for that function anymore, but that sworn person then can go back into the mix to fill slots where we're spending on overtime. So I agree that the actual personnel cost is about neutral, but we do think that it reduces overtime costs. And just another, on those first two, on the double filling, what's happening today is because we have a vacancy during that long period of, you know, pre-retirement time, where that slot still needs to be filled, so we're filling it with overtime now, which is more expensive than having a person just in the position. So it's... We think there is some savings from that particular item.
Okay, and my second question is, what is the... I know there's not really a status, but what's the timeframe for getting to work on this study?
So as soon as possible.
I am... They recommend Ernst &amp; Young. I am waiting their study, because I'm gonna review their study. I am meeting with them, not next week, but week after next. Next week, I'm going to the Metro Fire Chiefs Conference, where several organizations that have done studies will be there, and also chiefs who solicited those studies will be there, so I'll have an opportunity to talk to them as well. And after we've isolated what's the rights and wrongs that other people have done, then we'll move forward the process. It shouldn't be much longer.
So can we have an estimated timeframe?
Mr. President?
Thank you, and thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. So what, Ms. Chair, I would like to request from Fire and Finance Administration is that we have by the end of this month, a decision on who's gonna do the study to that, to us, as long as this balance doesn't really matter, it just needs to be done.
Jeff, you got that?
Yeah, I think we agree with that. Just one thought that came to our mind after the first hearing, we should probably agree collectively on the scope of what is to be studied. I think that's just as important as who does the study.
Yep.
So we have our thoughts on what we want to see, and a lot of it is related to some of the ones that I wanted to mention, on the suppression units swapping for EMS, or even going from ALS to BLS.
I think that's something we should discuss and come up with an agreement on what that should be, because...
Well, we're not asking you guys to do that here.
From a study's perspective, really getting to what is the volume, what can we expect the volume to be over the next three, five, 10 years, which will help us understand what's the service level needed to provide that service, you know, safely and effectively.
So our expectation is that we're not involved in that. That's a discussion between Fire and BBMR, and we expect, we have very capable folks on both sides, that you all work that out. We just want to be kept updated on the status.
Sure, we'll share with you the scope and who we select eventually.
Okay.
Okay. So...
I got a couple of questions on this sheet here. Just this real quick. So for, really for Mr. Center... The continuous testing for like the pump operators, we've noticed that they were like three short of what they think they actually need. Wouldn't it help to just allow them to have those three FTEs?
Yeah, we're looking at their staffing model currently, and what has likely happened over time is that they were reclassified to something else, so just looking to make sure we have the right class. I think one of the important things to note about the Fire Department, which is very different than police, it doesn't just matter how many bodies you have on that shift, it matters the classification, because that determines the overtime and overtime order. So we can work with the Fire Department to make sure that they feel that it's right-sized for the complement.
And then the last thing I was gonna say for the study, similar to something that we've been screaming to the Police Department about, is also about the call reduction. I don't know if we can include that in figuring out creative ways to reduce... To add that in the study, see if other cities have been successful in doing it.
And I think with the power of medicine, yes, we would love to have more grant funding to help with that. Our thought is that there might be a situation where we do devote more, potentially even city resources, if we can prove that we can take the pressure of the volume off of the system, so we have to think about that. It's the same idea with somebody being in the 911 center. The whole idea, which we've talked about with the department, is we need to take pressure as best we can off of the EMS system. So there might be ways we can do that, either with grant or city resource.
And it's still my perspective that the hospitals have to be at the table and have to have skin in the game. They are going to profit from us doing this, because we're gonna be diverting certain calls from them to other places, which would give them, you know, which would be advantageous to them. That's all. I think it has to be accomplished, and we've already started that conversation. The challenge we have is that the community paramedicine program that we have now is still in its evaluation stage, so we haven't crossed that threshold where we can talk about expanding it to other hospitals, or even whether or not University of Maryland sees it as being worthwhile to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Chief, can you run through your presentation now, and I'd ask you to keep it at about 10 to 15 minutes?
I can make it very short, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Fire administration, this section of the department is $11 million that we're recommending for that section, that covers executive leadership, budget IT, human resources, and basically general administrative resources. Fire suppression. Fire suppression is 24/7 units. We have... Not just do we have regular fire units within that item, we also have marine units. We do run EMS calls, emergency rescue, and hazardous material. This area is where Safer is at, the grant that covers the $2.4 million for each unit, which is two units that we have the grant for. They run around 320,000 unit calls as well. Emergency medical services, that item is... That service number is 51 million, over $51 million. It's a 24/7 unit as well, runs approximately 190,000 unit calls a year. Mobile integrated health community paramedicine is part of this program, and it is overseen by EMS. Fire emergency community outreach, this is where we funnel all the information through, where we reach out to the community, educate the community, get them involved with the Fire Department. This, and one of the questions that came to us, this is an arm, and actually it's almost a nerve center where it directs the rest of the body to do outreach, for all Service 611, just under $6 million. It oversees code enforcement. The reason... This is a very important component, primarily because their job is to reduce the likelihood of fire, and/or if a fire does occur, make sure that there are systems in place to ensure either the fire is kept in one area or even put out altogether, make sure it focuses on life safety of people, to make sure they have an ability to exit, and also it even focuses on the safety of firefighters. Service number 612, fire investigation. These individuals are... This area and the individuals involved in this area deal with cause and determination of fire. They assess the fire, they assess the incidents. They are a component that helps us not only evaluate how the fire started, so we do have that, but it also gives us the ability to research a propensity of what happens in our community, so we can direct our public education in a certain area. Service number 613, fire facility maintenance and replacement. It covers the maintenance and the capital, oversight and planning of over 40 fire structures, as well as fire apparatus coordinator with 350 pieces of apparatus. Fire EMS supply coordinator is also in that area. Fire communications and dispatch. Service number 614 covers the fire dispatchers and the 911 communication people in that service. Within that area, there are hundreds, over 165,000 incidents that are responded to or report... Are called from fire dispatch. Also, 911 callers take over 1.2 million calls annually. Fire training and education. That's the training component that keeps our people educated, trains our new hires, focuses on continued education, and tries to make sure that we have a very competent organization. It also... It also is the, the point where we, when we realize we have continuous issues with training, they refocus, redevelop training to make sure our people are the best they can be. I believe that was less than 10 minutes.
Council President Scott.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chief, I know you guys answered this question, but I have a couple of follow-ups on it. So, we asked you guys the question about the Equity Assessment Program.
Yes.
And you said that your Chief of Staff will act as the Equity Coordinator, uh, for now. A couple of questions and follow-up on that.
Okay.
So, the Chief of Staff, of course, is a direct report to you.
Yes, sir.
You also know that under the law, she would also have to be, under Councilwoman Snee's law, she would also have to be a city resident, is that...
She lives in Hampton.
All right, there we go, that's two for the price of one. Uh, you, also in your response, you said that, uh, she will only do it until BCFD has funded for a full-time Equity Coordinator.
Yes.
I guess, two things, one, under the law, doesn't, they don't, that person doesn't have to be a, a creative FTE. Basically, the requirement is for that person to be a direct report to the Agency Lead, the Agency Lead, which, under, uh, Councilwoman Snee's legislation, would also require that person to be a city resident. But, I also would just like to, for you to point out that, uh, their agencies, whose budget is significantly less than Fire, that have identified an Equity Coordinator permanently. BDC, for example, uh, whose budget is 5.6 million, planning, whose budget is 10.2, and of course yours is 246 million, million dollars. So I think that somewhere in there, if we, if we want to, we can find a, a permanent Equity Coordinator. Uh, and then also, just for your, for your knowledge, if you do not know, I saw the response about the baseline Equity Analysis. Uh, that is due to the Council on October the 17th of this year. Next question, follow-up, is about question eight in the packet. It says the percentage of EMS time spent on response, and same thing for Fire, Fire Suppression. So, it says the average unit hour utilization for EMS is .7. The average amount of time spent on EMS call when a patient requires transport is 75 minutes. Uh, however, that, some, similar breakdown was not provided for suppression.
We don't have access to that information right now, because all that information is in Fire records.
Is in, is in the data, you don't have your data back yet, okay.
So, I, I think I've outlined, as soon as we get that information, as soon as we can accurately pull together that information, we will get it to you.
We know how you feel, there are data files that we can't get to, and you had me too. Now, thank you, I am done, Ms. Chair.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Uh, following up on a couple of questions from last year. You've kind of addressed in your letter today, my questions from last year about take-home vehicles. But I just wanna review that for a second.
Okay.
You submitted information la, last year in reference to my question about how many take-home vehicles the department had, and how many are traveling further than 25 miles outside the city's border. You have addressed in your response here, the idea of a, kind of a cap on distance traveled. Um, but that information did show that there were 42 take-home vehicles in the department, and 23 of them were being taken farther than 25 miles outside of the city, with two going over 50 miles on one-way trips to Hanover, Pennsylvania. Um, and that's, you know, that's, uh, are all these, are all these vehicles still being used, uh, as take-home cars at this point?
I, I don't know what your list is from last year, I'd have to look at it.
But it was 42, have they been, has there been a significant reduction since last year?
Jeez, no. I need my glasses, that's all right.
I saw that look, that's a man need his glasses. That's how you know he wasn't reading any of that before, right?
All right. Chief Case doesn't believe the numbers changed.
Okay.
I do know some of the positions have changed, so if some of the people are taking them home, may, the, the distance may have changed with, but it's only a couple.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, it's concerning that this didn't raise enough of a red flag for this, like after the request last year, for something to have changed in the past year. So I just do wanna stress my concerns about this. I know that part of the justification that was given for why somebody would have a take-home vehicle in the first place was essentially that they're in a position that they should be, you know, need to be on call at any given time.
Right.
But it raises real, I mean, the idea, that, that justification was given, but this information was given, you know, during the hearing, but this information was given later. Because that raises real questions, like the, the justification, um, when I think like, what would the emergency response time be for somebody that's driving to Hanover, Pennsylvania? Like, that's the idea that they need to have a city take-home vehicle in, in order to go that, just so that they can give the quickest possible response on a moment's notice. I mean, yeah, the, the, the response time is so slow at that point anyway. So I really do wanna, I, I really do want this investigated, you know, I'd love to see, I'd like to see a comprehensive report on how you're evaluating...
Absolutely, but I'd, I'd like to put a pin in something here, too. When they respond, they respond like the sirens, most of the time, and they respond quickly. But I've got to make sure that the people have the right skillset, and we don't have a policy in place right now. So I'm, I'm gonna evaluate where we are with personnel, and I'll be more than happy to send something back to you.
Yeah, I'd like a, a pretty, I'd like a thorough understanding of how...
Absolutely.
...this policy is being considered and developed.
Absolutely.
The other thing I asked about last year was the Fire Watch Program, and I believe that you indicated that it, like, wasn't a thing anymore. And you gave me a, a three-year summary of Fire Watch.
Uh, go ahead, I'm listening, I just had the Fire Marshal come up, just in case you ask a question.
There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different locations reported, uh, having had some Fire Watch, uh, utilization from part of 2014 up through the time of the budget hearing last year in 2018. Only one of those locations had any accounting for billing from them. They all showed the total number of hours. All but two showed a total cost associated or attributed to that number of hours, but only one of them actually shows the total billing that was done. And that was at the Rosemont Tower location. Is there still somebody at Rosemont Tower?
Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Ready, Fire Marshal. We are still doing a, Fire Watch is coming in three levels, one, two, and three. We still have individuals at the Rosemont Tower, 740 Poplar Grove.
Are there individuals elsewhere at present? Or have there been individuals elsewhere over the last year, since the last budget hearings?
Yes, we've had 908 Valley Street. If I'm correct, that's the only one, two.
Rosemont and one other location, are you saying? Is, and how, what'd you say this other one was?
Valley.
Ballet?
Valley Street.
Valley Street. And how long has somebody been at Valley Street?
Uh, if I'm correct, one week.
At present? Or were, were they there for a week at some point, or are they...
Yes.
They've been there for like the last week?
Right.
Okay, and, but there's still somebody at Rosemont Tower?
Yes.
There's been somebody at Rosemont Tower since June of 2016? Why is there still somebody at Rosemont Tower?
Rosemont Tower, the problem that we have with Rosemont Towers is that the code requires that when you have fire, uh, protection systems, if one of the fire protection systems are inoperable, and it's a life safety hazard, we have to put in what is called a Level 3 Fire Watch. The sprinkler system, if there's a fire in, in Rosemont Towers, their pumps do not operate efficiently enough to get water up to the top floor and to fill the, uh, the pipes that causes the water to, uh, suppress the fire until we get there.
And what's the plan? Are they gonna be there from now to doomsday?
No, it's, it's my understanding that they are working on a plan. Um, it's, it's an extensive process, and it's an expensive process. So, it is my understanding they're working on that plan.
That's an HABC building, so HABC's operations are federally funded. You're funded with general fund dollars. And as of the report that you provided in response to the question last year, 400, 4,288 hours had been accounted for at this site, for a total cost accounted for of 227,969 dollars and 33 cents. Yet only 78,000 and some change was actually billed for. So that's either your cost accounts for $53 an hour, but you're only billing for $18 an hour, or out of 4,288 hours, you only billed for 1,487 hours. That's a pretty significant discrepancy between your value, your cost and your actual billings. And that sounds to me like the general fund and the tax, the taxpayers are eating the cost for something that HABC, a federally funded program, should be paying us for. Where, what's going on here?
Yeah, um, I, I, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to come back and evaluate that, and give you a response on what we build, how much we've collected. I do know we, we're capped at $45 an hour with them, but I'd like, I'd like to go back and evaluate that.
We're capped at $45 an hour with them or anybody? Is that special treatment because they're HABC?
We said everyone, we say everyone.
Everyone. Everyone's capped at 40, but your billing accounts for a total cost of $53. So for some reason, we've capped our billable rate at lower than our actual cost?
Yeah, what, what I'd like to do, honestly, because I, I can't give you, um, very expansive answers right now. I wanna go back and evaluate where we are with it. Uh, Chief Ready said they are just about through with their planning process to move forward. I'd like to know that as well, so I can give you a response on when do we anticipate them completing it?
I'd like to know when we anticipate collecting the revenue that we're due.
Well, I'm gonna include the billing as well.
Yeah, I, I need a more thorough report on what's going on at Rosemont Tower, and what the forward, you know, loo, looking forward, what the future of any Fire Watch program, I mean, if it's gonna be fiscally unaccountable, you know, if it's, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna have a revenue drain, I mean, if it's revenue negative like this consistently, I need to know how it's justified and why we can't make it revenue neutral, to have somebody from the Fire Department occupied and have it covered appropriately.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
Uh, Chief, the, um, the questions that we...
Did some, Jeff got up, I wanna make sure that that report got, that request got recorded. I'd, I want a comprehensive report on Fire Watch and the Rosemont Tower. Thank you, sorry.
As part of the questions that we, um, we previously asked, um, the Fire Department currently has 69 vacancies. Can you tell me, um, how much does each vacancy cost on average in a year of overtime?
For overtime?
Yes.
What, the reason why I held up on this, because I, I, what we use as a rule of thumb to figure it out is based on $50 an hour. And I'd like to get something to you that's more accurate, if you'd like to know exactly what. I think that vacancy level is around 3.96 percent, in that area, am I right? The challenge that we have with it, we're gonna always have, that is a lower vacancy level than we've historically had. We maintain somewhere between 3 and 5 percent, partly because, um, the contract, there are certain contractual components that put us in a position where we have to do that, where it's in our best interest to do that, let me put it like that. So I'd like to get that information back to you, uh, if you don't mind to let you know. But I wanna remind, I wanna remind you of this, even if you look at those numbers, we have to make sure when we put on recruit classes, it, it, we can't put on a recruits class for 20 people. We have to make sure that it's cost-effective in order to put on the recruit class. So I think somewhere around 3 to 5 percent is pretty awesome for the department, because it's much, much better, uh, than certainly we were the first two or three years when I got here.
Can you explain, um, and, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, but you, I think I heard you said that it's in our best interest to keep a certain vacancy rate, can you explain that?
There are certain components in the contract that, um, that has stipulations about us maintaining 5 percent or below vacancies. Our MOU.
Right.
Okay.
No, but, right, so I understand that contractually, but, but it seemed like you were saying that it was in the Fire Department's best interest.
Right, because keeping it below 5 percent gives us, gives us additional latitude of moving people around based on the contract.
Okay. Okay. Um, so you'll give me the numbers as it relates to the, to the cost of the vacancies?
I'm sorry.
You'll give me the numbers as it relates to the cost?
Yeah, yeah, and Chief Claggett just reminded me that we actually have two more classes in the fall where we're going to, uh, overhire. In other words, we're gonna overfill positions, um, in that time. But if you come back maybe three or four months later, we'll be somewhere around 2 or 3 percent again.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Just to clarify, um, for the record, so the question was to get the cost, how much does a vacancy cost on average in overtime? And so, uh, instead of giving me a, a generic number, they're gonna give me a more specific number as it relates to what that cost is.
Councilman Pinkett, let me, let me, are you talking about per position? Uh, general perspective per position, or are you talking about all the 69 positions? What, what do you think that costs you annually for overtime?
Um, each vacancy.
Okay.
So per position.
Okay, I got you, thank you.
Um, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you Chief, uh, to your women and men, thank you for your service. Uh, you know, nothing could be more important than the safety of both our citizens and also, um, our firefighters that are in the line of fire every single day. Uh, so, on October 17th, there's a explosion, I believe a gas explosion in Bowley's Lane. Um, in February, there was a really serious fire on Glover Street, uh, both with some injuries associated with it. Um, my understanding was that a report was supposed to be completed in April, so where is the report?
The report was supposed to be completed and given to council? Is that what, okay. Okay, sorry.
Afternoon, so the Deputy Chief Call Call was Safety and Risk Management. So we did a, an internal report for the Bowley's Lane, where we identified some of our, uh, the good things, the aspects, the good, the bad, the ugly. Uh, and, uh, we came up with several recommendations. Some, most of those recommendations were already being implemented, uh, from our training staff, uh, as far as for our member safety, uh, in the Glover Street. Uh, that was also, PIA was done, post-incident analysis, where several recommendations, uh, were made. Uh, and we're currently reviewing them now.
Can we get that...
I apologize, because I do remember it being in the public safety meeting, so please forget.
Can we, can we get that report? Because, you know, again, I just wanna be clear that safety of the women and men and the officers is paramount, and we wanna make sure that when we have, uh, these types of really horrific incidents, that we are, uh, properly following up, that we are reviewing protocols, and that we, uh, the Council are making sure that there is the sort of internal checks are happening consistently, uh, so that we can prevent other folks from being hurt.
Yes, absolutely.
When can we get that report?
Councilman Cohen, I'm gonna put that into the official records request here.
As early as tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yep.
And can you repeat just briefly a synopsis?
Sure, so there was a report commissioned related to, uh, two incidents, one Bowley's Lane, the other Glover Street. Uh, there were, it was a gas... There were, it was a gas fire, and then another fire. There were injuries, and there was reports commissioned, and I am requesting the department produce those reports tomorrow to the council.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll be hand-delivered tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bolak?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank you, Chief Ford. So, a couple of follow-up questions. I did want to comment and then a question. I do want to thank Councilman Dorsey for bringing up Rosemont Tower. I know, honestly, it's an issue that also deals with HABC and their ability to do renovations to those facilities, including FIRE, so I understand part of what's going on there. One issue that did come up, though, was around potential closures, and I know that that would be, or it should be part of the discussion and part of the study that's, that's happening. But, to one of the points that Council President Scott has been continuously referencing is around equity. So, I look at particular, some stations like, like Engine 36 in West Baltimore, and I know about 10 years ago, that was on the list of potential closures. So, again, thinking about areas where there's a significant need, keeping that in mind as we're going through that process, just wanted to, wanted to flag that, because clearly there, there are differences in need based upon geography, age, graphics, and all of that. The last piece that I did want to raise was around the fees for ambulance. Assistant one actually raised this point, and I'm someone who has, had an unfortunate incident and did get great service and coverage, and as someone who has insurance, 500 or then and now, $700, you know, is covered by insurance. But, if you don't have insurance, it could be quite a bit of a challenge. Can you talk about that fee, whether it's going to remain flat, whether it's, whether it's going to increase, and how that then fits into your, your budget and thinking about being able to cover the cost of those services?
Yes. Councilman, we have, we have continuously talked about actually raising those fees, and, and not just those fees, fees across the board in the department. Many of them haven't been changed for years. Now, the ambulance fee, I think we just recently made, yeah, we, it went up how much? I'm sorry.
The total revenue went up by a million. It put us on par with other surrounding jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you.
Which was roughly half of what our consultant recommended.
You said it was less than half?
It was half of what our consultant recommended.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. It, it's actually been my, my recommendation that we follow CPI, and when CPI increases by, and it normally increases by 1% to 2% annually, and that way, we can ma, we can keep up with what is believed the increases in, in the industry. But, that also goes down at times during, during the early 2000s, because of the situation that was going on, it went down. So, let me, let me see if I can figure out what, what the cost. Okay. Right. I want, I wanted to make sure that I knew how much it was. My Finance Director, Jim Fisher, just said he thinks it went up around $270 per ALS transport, Advanced Life Support Transport.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Chief, the staffing, the staffing model that you committed to at the February 2019 Public Safety Hearing, that's separate from the study that we're talking about, right? Or that's the same thing?
Same.
Same thing? Okay. And are we confident that that will still be done by October of 2019?
Not completely confident. What I, what I was talking about, I believe, on, on the staffing model was the creation of the new staffing position, and, and we are in the process of working on that. And then, the staffing model would follow, because the, there would be a new position that would allow the flexibility of moving that individ, that individual position around.
Okay.
And DHR is doing the research on that right now to know the description behind it.
Did we, did anyone talk about preventative maintenance yet of vehicles? The Department for Service 613 Fire Facilities Maintenance and Replacement, the performance goal is percentage of vehicles in apparatus that receive preventative maintenance as scheduled by Fleet Management. The goal is 90%. Do you know where we were at for that this year?
I'll get back to you on that. I know we did lose some of the data with the
Oh, it's shut down?
Yeah. But, I do have some things written down. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, did I ask my cybersecurity questions? I didn't ask those yet. When was the first time you were contact, oh, first, let me take a step back. Fire was impacted by the cybersecurity incident? When was the first time that the CIO or BSIT reached out to you, Chief?
Oh, he reached out to, we were reached out to the day the incident happened. I think it was May 7th.
Day of, day of the incident?
May 7th. We were, I, I was contacted that morning.
Was there, was there any guidance provided by BSIT as to email addresses that should be created, temporary Gmail addresses?
No. Not at that time. There were later conversations given, and, and that's when we began.
Do you recall how long after May 7th those conversations took place?
No, sir, I can't tell you that.
Did you roundball it, or no?
I'd hate to do that, because I
Understood. No, that's fair. When you were given guidance to create those Gmail accounts, were you told to create Gmail Business Suite accounts, or
Not, not necessarily. Not necessarily. It wasn't the guidance, in fact.
Was there an offer made by BSIT to create those email addresses for you?
I don't, I don't recall that.
Okay. Is FIRE fully operational in terms of email right now?
Good afternoon, Assistant Chief Zimmerman. Our IT people are working through the stations, our headquarters, and probably 60% of our staff have their emails. There have been some issues with getting them onto the desktops. We're working through the OWA app, just like everybody else.
Sure.
But, we are working our way through the stations. We're working with BSIT to get that done, and we're making very good progress on it.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Burnett? Just give me one more second, Chief.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for responding with an adequate letter that, that addresses the concerns raised by BBMR. Before we go into recess, I just want to give BBMR an opportunity, if you so choose, to respond to anything else in, in the written response from BCFD.
So, thank you, appreciate that, and thank you, Chief, for, for getting back and responding to those items. I think the, you know, the study that we've are working towards will help us get a better sense of the volume and the, and the, you know, the response that's needed and the level of service that's needed. You know, I sit in a lot of these hearings, and I take very seriously the feedback that we get, that we need to free up, you know, money and, and resources for preventative-type things. And so, you know, public safety agencies, including FIRE and police, of course, are part of that. So, we appreciate looking into that more deeply and coming back with more information. I think everything else I already commented on in response to those questions about civilianization facilities and whatnot.
Okay. And Jeff, you got the request I made about the fleet maintenance? Okay. Chief, thank you very much to the men and women in the Fire Department. Thank you for everything you're doing to keep our city safe. We're now in recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow.